We'll open tonight's committee of the whole for March 19th, 2019. You have the minutes from our March 5th meeting. Any additions or corrections? If not, do I have a move to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are carried. Questions on the agenda for City Manager Buston?
Mayor, I do have a couple of things I need to bring, some corrections I need to bring to your attention. On the minutes for the actual meeting, they say that they are the minutes for February 5th. That should be March 5th. So, the very first line of the minutes says February 5th. That's actually March 5th.
Okay.
On item 8B, which is the Blue Friday event, which is... Item 8B is where you are designating these events as... Well, there's a whole list of the downtown events that we're going to be doing.
Entertainment district, street closings.
And it actually says that Blue Friday is going to be November 22nd. It's actually going to be November 29th. So, we want to make sure that when you're voting on that, you're voting on November 29th.
Okay.
And then, finally, item 8F7. Councilman Griswold brought this up. There is a $1,000 discrepancy between what it says in the agreement and what it says on the agenda item. It is correct on the agenda item. The $53,009.40 is correct. And so, when you vote, you will be voting on the $53,009.40, not the $54,009.40.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Jim. Any questions from the council for the City Manager?
I have a question that's not necessarily on the agenda, but I guess it'd be a good time to ask it. I had one of my constituents in Ward 8 call about the water being turned off. I think they got it worked out. But I just wanted to ask you, Jim, if we can look into that and see if we can make sure we do cooperate with our citizens. Kevin Hounded, I think I talked to the gentleman at Ward 8, and he understood why it happened. It was just an unfortunate situation. I feel like it might have could have been corrected if he'd been warned a little earlier or knocked on his door or something. I don't know what the procedure is, but I know Mrs. James, the order board did a good job with him. I'd appreciate if you could just look at it and see if we're doing everything we can do.
Okay, we will.
Yeah, I think Councilman Dawson's microphone is cutting in and out. Is there... Can we check on that, please?
I think it's... Since he wasn't talking right into the microphone, it happens if you talk off to the side, it cuts in and out.
Tess.
You're good, chief.
Anything else for City Manager? Okay. If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Send me.
Any of the whole is adjourned? Got about a minute? Need to wait? Okay. So, we'll get started in just a minute. City Council meeting for March 19th, 2019. Lindsey?
Johnson.
Here.
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 Present?
Taylor.
Here.
Here.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under Mayor's Communications, we had a very short committee of the whole meeting. Had a few questions that we were answered, that the City Manager answered for us, and we did make some changes to our minutes that will be approved in here in just a little while. A couple of things I wanted to announce is that the hospital has put together an entity, a committee called MIND, and its only function is to provide the best organization, the best question in answering, the best resources to help the people of Lee County get through this recent disaster that we've had in Borghardt and Smith Station. They brought together all kind of people from all over Lee County to a meeting last week that they hosted and provided supper for, which was very nice. And they're going to move forward with a standing committee. I'm very encouraged by that. I think the hospital is a natural leader for that. It's a trusted partner of everybody in this county. They have everybody's best interest in mind, and they had everybody at the table that you would want to be there, including some of the recent people from FEMA and from the Small Business Administration that folks will be talking to about helping them get back on their feet financially here in the future. So, anyway, I just want to let you know that as citizens, that there is an entity that's getting started. It does have the horsepower of the hospital behind it. I'm very encouraged that they're going to be doing the right thing for the right reasons I'm very encouraged that they're going to be doing the right thing for the right reasons with the right amount of energy. with the right amount of energy. That doesn't mean it's going to be perfect because it's going to be made up of human That doesn't mean it's going to be perfect because it's going to be made up of human beings that are trying to do the right thing. beings that are trying to do the right thing. So, I would suggest to you that if you have ideas and thoughts, that you share them with So, I would suggest to you that if you have ideas and thoughts, that you share them with anybody that's on this committee, and that obviously if you have your own desires to anybody that's on this committee, and that obviously if you have your own desires to do things, that you ought to continue to do that. do things, that you ought to continue to do that. Christine Hill is a process management analyst with East Alabama Medical Center, and she's Christine Hill is a process management analyst with East Alabama Medical Center, and she's been tasked with being the curator of this committee. been tasked with being the curator of this committee. But anyway, I think it's a really good thing for Lee County, and I think it's great for But anyway, I think it's a really good thing for Lee County, and I think it's great for the people who are suffering the most right now. the people who are suffering the most right now. So, I look forward to their efforts. So, I look forward to their efforts. I want to thank our public safety folks and athletics. I want to thank our public safety folks and athletics. We had an impromptu recognition and celebration for the basketball team Sunday night downtown We had an impromptu recognition and celebration for the basketball team Sunday night downtown at Tumors, and it was a really happy time. at Tumors, and it was a really happy time. The guys who played basketball for Auburn were very surprised and very heartfelt in The guys who played basketball for Auburn were very surprised and very heartfelt in their excitement of seeing how many people were down there waiting on them to get off their excitement of seeing how many people were down there waiting on them to get off the bus. the bus. And I just think our police department, they had it totally under control. And I just think our police department, they had it totally under control. It was a very safe situation, and it was a very fun situation. It was a very safe situation, and it was a very fun situation. It's something that all of us that were there will never forget. It's something that all of us that were there will never forget. It was very exciting. It was very exciting. So, anyway, those are a couple of things I had tonight. So, anyway, those are a couple of things I had tonight. Does anybody on the council that has something that they would like to mention? Does anybody on the council that has something that they would like to mention?
I'd like to mention, going back to what we talked about last time, I've seen a lot I'd like to mention, going back to what we talked about last time, I've seen a lot more of it for the tornado victims. more of it for the tornado victims. Our Public Safety Department, our police and fire did an excellent job. Our public safety department, our police and fire did an excellent job. Very proud of them. Very proud of them. And I also like to mention, you don't hear a lot about them, but I think that were part And I also like to mention, you don't hear a lot about them, but I think that were part in first responders was the volunteer fire department right at Borghardt. in first response was the volunteer fire department right at Borghardt. I think they did an excellent job, and I can remember a time in this county when that's all we had was volunteer fire departments, and they do an excellent job, and just wanted to recognize them and again say how much I appreciate our public safety personnel. They really made us proud of what they handled and continue to keep those folks in our prayers and thoughts as we move forward.
Thank you, Tommy. And I certainly echo your thoughts about our folks. They did a great job. Anyone else on the council? Anything they'd like to mention?
Yes, I want to let everyone know that diversity and inclusion. We'll have a meeting with Dr. Taffey Clayton at the Harris Center, April 3rd, at 5:30, and she's going to do a presentation.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll have a couple of things, please.
Sure.
Councilman Witten and I are fortunate enough to take a tour this morning of the wastewater facilities, and I just got to tell you, we've got folks out there doing really, really hard work, fantastic work, highly technical work, and we've got a great resource there, good crew, good contractor crew as well. They did a really nice job, and we don't appreciate sometimes when you turn on the spigot what really happens to make it that way, but we've got some hardworking folks out there. And the other thing I've got is have a ward meeting on April 9th at 6 o'clock at the Harris Center, and the key focus of that's going to be on major intersections within Ward 2. So, hopefully, anyone is invited, not just Ward 2 folks. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Let me just make another announcement. I also want to let everyone know that I did attend the National League of Cities in Washington, DC last week, and it was very informational, and I really did enjoy it, and I would like to see some of the other council members attend that conference because it's very, very informative and very educational. And that was city council, mayors from all over the world that came out, and I was able to fellowship and learn about their city, and they were learning about Auburn, and everybody got different issues, but it was a very good conference.
Good. Thank you, Connie. Thank you for your time to go up there. I wanted to recognize Ms. Reed. She's with the Census Bureau, and she's here tonight and in town recruiting workers to help. So, if you're interested, she's left some of her cards with me. We can share that with you, but the census is going to be really important to our community because there's obviously some new people that have moved here since the last 10 years, and we need to count for all of them. But anyway, she's recruiting people to help and willing to pay for those workers, so we have some of your cards, and thank you for being here this evening, okay? All right, good. All right, Auburn University Communications.
Good evening, council. So, here's to a wonderful Auburn weekend this past weekend, as you all said, with the SEC Championships and our men and women's basketball team going to the NCAA. It was a very exciting and awesome time to be a student at Auburn. This upcoming week, the pharmacy school is hosting Mental Health Week in the Student Center, where they're just giving the opportunity for students to come by and learn about mental health and checking on themselves with actual physicians there, which is a really great opportunity. This upcoming weekend as well, our SGA President and the Executive Vice President of Outreach are traveling to DC to meet with the Alabama Congressional Delegation, as well as the Department of Justice, the Department of Education, and the White House to discuss all that is going on in Auburn and how... What a wonderful place it is. And lastly, this is my last time to speak in front of you all, so I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity and for all that you have taught me and for all the respect that you've offered me. It's been awesome. We're evil.
Thank you, Caroline. You've done a great job.
Thank you.
We've been honored to have you here, and who's your replacement going to be? Do we know yet?
We do not.
Okay.
I'll be here the next couple of weeks with them.
We're counting on you to train them.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. All right, next, we'll move into Citizens Communications on items on our agenda. Remember, this is just for items that are on our agenda tonight. You'll have five minutes, and please give us your name and address for the record. Okay. Is there anyone? Okay, we'll move forward. City Manager's Communications.
Mayor, under City Manager's Communication, our first item of business this evening is the Consent Agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, we'd like to... I'd like to remove 8F2. Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to remove 8F7 and 8F9.
Anyone else? Okay, then.
So, under item 8F2, we have the Gillespie Construction LLC, Moores Mill Road Sidewalk Project, in the amount of $626,590.
Do we need to approve the Consent Agenda first?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm ahead of myself.
I may for approval of the Consent Agenda with...
Second. Does that need to be with the corrections on the minutes? Do we need to state that?
You could, with the corrections as indicated during Committee of the Whole.
Okay, all right. So, we have a motion and a second on the rest of the Consent Agenda with corrections for the minutes. Are there any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the Consent Agenda is approved. All right, so 8F2.
Item 8F2 is Gillespie Construction for the Moores Mill Road Sidewalk Project in the amount of $626,590.
Jim, can you just tell us a little bit about that project, how it came to be, and what's going to be going there, and talk about where it's going?
So, I'll let... It's part of our sidewalk plan and it's part of a sidewalk project that's been on... We've been trying to get done for quite a few years, but I'll let Kevin give you some detail about it.
Thank you.
So, this is the final segment of sidewalk on Moores Mill Road. This is the segment from Deanville Avenue, and we'll go to connect with the sidewalk that's between University and Deanville, so connect that. So, we'll literally be able to walk over a tree, Hamilton Road, all the way downtown on the sidewalk. So, this will be sidewalk on one side of the road and a five-foot-wide sidewalk. The origins of this go back quite some time, from our sidewalk planning and connecting neighborhoods to schools, and so, some of this will connect with the Sanford School and the Jim and Ty School. And then, we had a very strong commitment and support from the neighborhood, knocking on doors and knocking on doors. That was several years ago. We were paying $400,000 grant to help to work with construction. It doesn't cover all of the house, but it covers about 200,000.
That's great.
So, is this the total cost of the whole project that we have on the agenda?
Yes.
Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion? For approval? Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8F7 is with Auburn City Board of Education to provide an additional school resource officer for the period April 1st, 2019 through July 1st, 2021.
Any questions for the City Manager?
Yes, Jim, could you give us an overview of how that program works in terms of the officer recruitment and selection and whatnot? Are they... I assume they're regular police officers, certified, trained in everything, and once their shift at the school is over with, they are available for...
I wish we'd hear that more often.
That was a note saying that they couldn't hear Kevin. Okay. Once they're completed with their shift at the schools, they are available for other uses, and how is that scheduled to make maximum utilization of the officers? And also, the funding part is... I noticed it says it's reimbursed by the school district.
By the schools.
Okay, just an overview, please.
Okay. I'll give you a little bit. So, from the funding part, the school pays for the salary, the city pays for the benefits for the officers, and I'll let Mr. James talk about how they're scheduled.
Yes, so they're scheduled any day that the school is in session, so say Monday through Friday on a regular school week. They are there for the full school period, but then when the school is out for spring break, summer, Christmas, then they would do normal patrol duties at that time, and that's the reason that the city pays for the benefit portion because we do get a benefit from that officer, and the school gets a benefit, so they are paying the full salary. We just pay the benefit portion.
And we're doing one additional one now. Has the school district requested any additional support in the future? Is that something planned for other...
More? We're in discussions for some additional officers, yes.
Thank you.
Right.
Any other questions? Any comments?
I may have missed this. What is the total amount we've got designated... Or how many SRL officers do we have currently?
We have seven positions.
Seven positions. Are those all filled, or we're filling?
I'm sorry.
Are those all filled? How many?
Yes.
This one's a lie.
Good questions. Any other question? Do I have a motion?
Send me.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8F9 is with Bodine's Landscape Services to install landscaping on the Moores Mill Road and East University Drive near Interstate 85 on the Moores Mill Bridge, in the amount of $23,960.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just... On the overall project for the bridge and the intersection, it just seems like we're continually approving or considering piecemeal funding, and I understand that's tied to your schedule and whatnot, but what I'm curious about is what's left? What else are we going to see on this intersection, which has had just a tremendous amount of work? It's a beautiful bridge. I've never seen a bridge that's pretty from the interstate side looking up, but this one is. What's left on this overall project? So that Tommy can get some funding for his bridge.
Well, the majority of this bridge was paid for by the state. It was not... It was a grant. We paid... Kevin, do you remember the amount we paid on the bridge?
About 13 million.
13 million. So, I'm not sure how much more. We're at the end of this project. So, I think this would be the end. I know there are little landscape things around that several of the homeowners that are in that area that we've been talking with, and we may bring some of those back to you as we fix those, but this should be the last major amount of money for this project that is... At least for this particular intersection project, with the caveat that I know Public Works is working with a couple of the neighbors who wanted some drainage differently or put some grass back differently, or things like that.
But these are all budgeted items as part of the whole project.
These are all budgeted items as part of that whole project, yes.
But you've got to admit, it's hard to explain to my citizens in Ward 8 why they get all that out there on that... It's where you can't even get on the interstate at, and we can't even get lights. I mean, like somewhere along the way, we could get some lights out there on Exif. I'm not asking for a brick facade when you're going down the road. I'm just simply asking for lights to keep some of them from losing their life down there. And I know I've complained about it a lot, but I get a lot of complaints from my constituents, and it's just... To me, it's just not fair to see all that in that one area and not even have a light, not even a light, not even four lights, not... There's zero lights. Only lights you got is what you can see with flashlights somewhere, your headlights. It's nothing. I know it's not your fault, but it gets frustrating on my part when I continue to see that, and I can't even get lights on Cox Road. And then we got the intersection, Cox and South College, it was going to get a traffic light a long time ago, and several have gone in around the city ahead of that one, when that's one of the most dangerous intersections in the city. So, I know I'm venting my frustrations, but it's a good opportunity to vent them, so I've vented, so that's all I got to say about the matter.
Thank you, Tommy. Anyone else have a question or want to vent some frustration? Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Send me.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under ordinances this evening, we have item 9A1 is the authorization for the Lee County Revenue Commissioner to collect the five-mill general purpose property tax. This is a renewal of a current property tax and not a new tax.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward or vote on this tonight? Seeing none. Lindsey?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitton?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Item 9A2 is the authorization for the Lee County Revenue Commissioner to collect the 11-mill special school tax. This, again, is a renewal of a current property tax and not a new tax.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward or vote on this this evening? If not, are there any questions? Seeing none. Lindsey?
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes. Toby? Yes, ma'am.
Carson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitton?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Item 9A3 is the authorization for the Lee County Revenue Commissioner to collect the five-mill special school tax. This is a renewal of a current property tax and not a new tax, and all three of these taxes were voted on by the citizens of Lee County.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward or vote on this this evening? If not, are there any questions?
How long is this in effect?
How long have they been in effect?
So, how long will the extension be in effect?
One year, right?
They have to be renewed every year.
Every year, okay.
This particular one's been in effect since 1960, I believe.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Lindsey?
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Toby?
Yes, ma'am.
Carson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitton?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Item 9B is a request for approval of the amendments to Article 3, Article 4, Article 5, and Article 6 of the city zoning ordinance to create the corridor redevelopment east and medium-density residential district zoning districts. The planning commission unanimously recommended this for approval. A public hearing is required.
I just want to let the council know before we get started this time. I read over this this weekend. I'm personally not comfortable moving forward. I know there's been a ton of work that's been invested in this from the planning commission and the planning staff, but I personally am not in a good position where I think I understand this and want to move forward on a vote with this this evening. I certainly respect the wishes of the council if you feel differently, but I would like to... I would like to see this either tabled, or if you say denying unanimous consent is the best way administratively to handle this, but I'd like to have a work session and go through this a little bit. I just want to understand it at a deeper level. I don't know how everybody else feels about this.
I agree, and the recommendation speaks to the ADDU that we've not even addressed yet, and we have a work session on Monday?
On Monday.
Monday at 4 o'clock. Is there any opportunity for us to discuss this at the same time of that meeting, or does it need to be separate?
I think so.
is an item that there's disagreement on, at least at the staff and development community level, so I don't see the ADDU discussion taking very long at all.
And I will be sending you, Forrest did provide me with the changes from what you've seen, what those modifications would be. I'll send those to you tomorrow, so you'll be prepared with what the minor changes are.
So we could talk about both of these on Monday then?
Yeah, we could get some material put together for you. We, we, it's, we'll pretty much be using material that we use with the planning commission to get it through, get it through that body, so shouldn't be, shouldn't be a lot of original effort on our part.
Sure. And Forrest, there's a chance, Jim, for us to get that ahead of time so we could look at it over the weekend maybe before Monday's meeting instead of...
And Monday's meeting is open to the public, is that correct?
That is correct.
4:00 in the city meeting room. So discuss ADDUs, so...
Now, this is, this is a work session. It's open to the public. It's not for interaction with the public, but it's for the public to, to listen.
All right, so, uh, that's my determination on this tonight. If the council has a different feeling on that, I certainly am willing to listen to that, but...
Should we table this to be on the same meeting agenda as we have slated for the ADDU?
Which is the first meeting in April.
I would, so what I would do is just deny unanimous consent for this evening. It would automatically come on, uh, in two weeks. If at that time you want to delay it longer, you could then table it.
And we could have the public hearing?
And we'd have the public hearing at that meeting instead of this meeting.
Okay. So I'll move to deny unanimous consent. Do we need to introduce it and get a second before we do that?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. Learning on, on the way. So we do need a...
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
I'll deny unanimous consent.
And if, if you could, for, could you do the same for item 9C because 9C and 9B are attached?
Absolutely, sure. I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
And I'll deny unanimous consent.
Then we'll have a public hearing for both of those on April 1st?
For both of those.
Or the first meeting in April.
Yeah. Item 9D1 is Donahue Land LLC requesting annexation of 1.06 acres located west of North Donahue Drive and south of Camden Ridge subdivision. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item.
I'll introduce this ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Does anyone in the council do not want to move forward on, vote on this this evening? If not, are there any questions? Seeing none. Lindsey.
Toby?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitton?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Item 9D2 is Ricky and Annette Pitts requesting annexation of 1.606 acres located at 4425 Lee Road, 146. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Does anyone in the council have a problem moving forward to vote on this this evening? If not, are there any questions? Lindsey.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Toby?
Ma'am.
Andrew?
Yes.
Under resolutions this evening, we have item 10A is Don Allen requesting conditional use approval for a warehouse on property located at 1918 and 1922 Mall Boulevard. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item and a public hearing is required.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Move for approval?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10, oops. Item 10B authorizes a vacation of a drainage and utility easement and alley located at 654, 680, and 702 North Gay Street, along with a quitclaim deed relinquishing this property to the Avenue at Auburn LLC. A public hearing is required.
We will open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council on this issue, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions from the council?
Will we, um, will we get this back once they're done with their work?
No, we are, we are giving this back because we're finished. Yes.
And so they will be responsible for...
They're responsible for maintenance and, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Move for approval?
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Those are all the items we have on the agenda this evening.
All right, at this time, we'll, uh, open the floor, open the floor up for citizens open forum. This is the time for you to address the council on anything on your mind. Um, you have three minutes and please step forward and give your name and address for the record.
In Biblis, I have a question about, uh, Gay Street, the North Gay Street.
Name and address, ma'am.
Pardon?
Your name and address, please.
921 Biblis Avenue. And I drive that street all the time. What were you thinking when you have the houses so close? You can open a window and shake hands with the ones next door. Uh, and there are a lot of people working there. Are they all legal in this country? I have talked to Betwitten about that, but I wonder, as a legal immigrant, I have had enough of illegal aliens. And I wonder, I know that you do e-verify for the city, but do you do e-verify for people who are working in, in the city?
Mr. Burson?
We only are responsible and only do and only can do, uh, e-verify for our employees. Now, we do know that if you have a contract with us, we require that you do e-verify, so all the contractors who contract with us are required to e-verify their employees, but we have no jurisdiction over the private sector.
So the subcontractors can bring them in?
If they're a subcontractor and they're working for us, they need to be e-verified, but I don't know about the private sector.
No, okay. I was just wondering. But why do you allow the houses to be so close? I have lived in Auburn since, since, uh, August of 65 and it was a dirt road at the time and, and I drive it all the time. But why do you let somebody build so close?
Forrest, would you like to answer that one?
Who is going to live in all the, the things that you have built in, in Auburn?
It'll be all students. Can't answer that question. Uh, the answer to the second question is, it's a, and I'm not beating around the bush, it's a little bit of a perception issue up there. I drive that same route to and from work. You, there's actually 15 feet spacing between those buildings. It doesn't look like it because they have high pitched roofs. And so a lot of the features on those cottages are what I would consider to be exaggerated, but they actually meet the building, building separation requirement at 15 feet, which is actually greater than what a lot of our single family residential subdivisions are required to meet. If you're in a performance subdivision, you'll actually see houses that are, um, 10 feet apart with five foot side setbacks, um, for each resident, so it is, trust me, I, I thought the same thing and we verified all that and it's accurate, but the, those, the features of those cottages are pronounced to the extent that it makes the setback look less to the eye than what it actually is.
Even to the road, to the actual, to Gay Street? The, you said to each other, but to the road itself?
Right, the, yeah, the set, the setbacks essentially, they've got a, I believe, a 20-foot on the front or a 15, but again, and see, and what makes it worse, and I should bring this up as well, is we measure height to the eve of a building, so you're starting to see a lot of construction now that is having a really exaggerated pitches on their roofs. Those pitches don't count against the height. You have to keep that in mind as well. So what you see by, what you see with the eye is, uh, is, is gonna be somewhat deceiving, quite frankly. The more we see these really high pitched roofs, people assume that the roof itself counts the building height. It doesn't.
I'm not familiar with that road. Is there, um, a sidewalk on that side of the street?
It's from Drake to, it used to be from Drake to college. Now it's from Drake to Shelton.
But is there a sidewalk on the side of the street that you're talking about?
Uh, yeah, there is somewhat, I think, on, on that side.
The current sidewalk hopscotch is basically you get, it runs down one side and then you have to cross the street one time to get to the other between Drake and Shelton Mill.
And is the setback requirements from the street and the curb or from the edge of the sidewalk or where does it start as far as their setback?
Typically, the, typically, the, the front setback line is gonna be just inside of where the sidewalk goes. But by and large, typ, and also a lot of times, utility poles generally will represent a property line.
So is that the case for the...
It's all situational specific. Yes, sir. Yeah, you're always gonna have some property that's actually right of way that's gonna be actually in what would appear to be private property, but it's not, which is that area that's typically between the sidewalk and the curb.
So what is the traffic going to be when everybody is going to live there? Are you going to put lights or what? Because it's, if they're students, you're really going to have a, a lot of traffic coming into the Gay Street. And it's not just there, it's further up too that they have taken down all the trees and are, are going to build.